And I have seen the line. I'm reading the idea. And. Just your ass. Your important ass back. Then bring up this. Too much of your kids has, um. At my neighbor's house? Okay, they weren't there at all this evening.
Seven thirty. I had seven thirty. It's called the name of one of them.
But we are due to the by United States of America. Intuitively public or British scams. On addition of God. Invisible. The lady just sounds so wrong.
Thank you. Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Harney. Ms. McGuire. Mr. Thorne.
Here.
Ms. Bo.
Here.
You have a court, Mr. President. Okay, we've got four of six trustees present. The four is a forum. Down to meeting. Move on. Next item is the minutes of the previous meeting. We have multiple so through.
Still moved.
Seconds.
Moved by Thorne, seconded by Thomas. Would you like the minute read into the?
No.
Okay. We won't read the minutes into the meeting tonight. Uh, and changes and corrections of the minutes? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Message so carries. Minutes so carries. Thank you all. Uh, the next item is the president's report. And uh, do the civility pledge, Mr. Dattley?
In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Uh, okay. Uh, we do have a, uh, milk on the agenda for ordinance amending the liquor license, the liquor permit process. Uh, that is still a work in progress, and we will bring that back, uh, the first of September.
President Fickett? I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move the swearing in of our new police officer up to the present time.
Okay. Jesse, we should come down the hall. Please, please, the chief coming down the hall.
There was a second.
Okay. Moved by, yeah, we seconded by Bo to amend the case to bring up, uh, the item under the police report, the hiring of a new part-time officer. Comments, questions, or discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion to amend? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion so carries. Chief? Where is yours?
First, I'd like to make a motion that we extend, uh, part-time police officer position to, okay. Nicholas De Jesus. Uh, starting salary of twenty-seven. What's that? Twenty-seven thirty, twenty-seven thirty an hour.
Second.
Moved by Dattley, seconded by Bo to authorize the hiring of a part-time officer, Nicholas De Jesus?
Jesus.
Jesus. Uh, as a part-time officer of the village of Sleepy Hollow and salary of twenty-seven dollars and thirty cents per hour. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Chief, got a background info?
Yeah. So Nicholas, Nicholas lives in West Chicago. Uh, he's just, he's a full-time certified police officer. Um, and he's previously worked full-time for the Bartlett's Police, Bartlett Police Department. Um, he's also a, uh, right now he's a marine reservist, was a full-time US Marine. Um, has worked in hospital security environments in the past, so he's got some good period experience. Um, and he's worked in the past with one of our current officers, Erv Peterson. Um, so Erv recommends him very highly, and I respect Erv's opinion very, very much as well. So I think he'll be a really good fit for us.
Excellent.
Let me find him. I've lost him on the way here. My pocket is different than your pocket.
A little way of only speaking, uh, roll, sorry. Yeah. Well. We'll let him be here when we have the roll call.
Very good. Nicholas?
Here he is.
Yeah. On the motion to hire a part-time officer, Nicholas De Jesus.
Hello.
Uh, roll call, please. I'm gonna go ahead and go on. Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Thornd.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
No affirmative votes, no negative votes? The motion so carries. Nicholas, you are officially a part-time officer of the village of Sleepy Hollow. Why don't you follow this gentleman's directions? I, I, I'm speechless. Just with everything. Hi, state your name.
Hi, Nicholas De Jesus.
Having been duly appointed to the position of patrol officer?
Having been duly appointed to the position of patrol officer?
In the village of Sleepy Hollow?
In the village of Sleepy Hollow.
Kane County, Illinois.
Kane County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
This Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinance of the villages of Sleepy Hollow?
And the ordinances of the village of Sleepy Hollow.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of patrol officer to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of patrol officer to the best of my ability.
We did it. Awesome.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm next. I mean, I'm next to Navy, but we'll let a Marine on if it's just one.
You would want a Marine on, that's what I think.
Next thing, party ball. Justin Kelly's hand.
Hello. Thank you so much. Well, you have more to say.
Welcome. I'll be in touch, get the information, you know. Touch base next year, so.
That's good.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay. Okay, now we turn to the agenda of the published. I started to speak about the item two under the president's report. The, uh, amendment to the liquor license permits will be at the September meeting. What we're looking at, it is adding a use, uh, or the availability of a vendor to serve hard liquor at, uh, the Halloween or the, uh, Fourth of July event. At this point, only beer and wine are allowed in special event for many. Considering opening that to hard liquor. And that will be coming back the first of September. Uh, the other thing, uh, we had, uh, National Night Out Tuesday after the last board meeting. It was a little drizzly, but it wasn't a bad evening.
No, it was, it's all. Not as high as, as.
Yeah, could have been. Nice little turnout over there. Seems to be a nice location to get people in and out of.
Yeah.
Nice evening. Uh, the other thing that happened between meetings was that, uh, we had a meeting with the local business owners. Mr. Hoff, our local economic development liaison, uh, has compiled a list of all fourteen business owners within the village of Sleepy Hollow's commercial district. And we contacted them. We had a meeting, uh, two weeks ago, just to meet and greet with, uh, six of them.
Yep.
It was six of them. It was interesting, a morning, it was a nice get-together. They're sort of our orphan residents. Uh, we see the residents here, but we never see the business owners uh, on a regular basis come through the business meetings here. So it was kind of nice to get to know them and put names and faces together. Uh, it's something we will probably do on a somewhat regular basis going forward. Maybe once every three or four months, have a, a short get-together with them, cup of coffee, half hour or something. They did bring up some concerns to us that, uh, we will be taking a look at. Finally. Let them say the, uh, part by employees and patrons. As it gets dark, you know, later and earlier, we'll keep an eye on that situation. I told them. Nice, uh, nice get-together. Nice, you know, first stop. Appreciate that, yeah.
You're welcome.
Uh, I was doing a secret and waiting for later on.
Actually, I do have something to report. My value is that warning, you think, warning, please? There's still any, yes, uh, tell, uh, tell us. Here it is. How's your air? Uh, thank you. Uh, no, it's, uh, tomorrow is the day that, uh, uh, tomorrow is today, we've been trying to, uh, 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 pack it. Uh, well, we, uh, really, actually, nothing to go, it's, uh, 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 website that, uh, website, website dot memory dot gov that gives you all of the packets, all the papers, uh, do exactly what we do. Basically, it's all way down connected dot. Uh, starting tomorrow, you can pick up, uh, pick up their trail, and I think it's pretty much downloadable from, uh, on, on your net. And then you can start securing, uh, uh, signature for the decision. So, uh, those will not have to be given until November. There will be a complete calendar that will be divided by, uh, the, uh, the state. So it's, it's much more simple than what we've had in the past. In the past, we had some, uh, uh, problems, they can do that, they got the right information, they have the right document. This is all, uh, it was the wisdom of the state legislation. Go on, please. Uh, so, uh, with that, that's all that I have really.
Yeah. All right. The court reports in. Item one, the, the land and zoning. P and Z, I believe, has a recommendation to give to the board's team.
No. The, uh, signing and zoning commission, um, heard and reviewed the application, um, of Mr. Buerka, uh, with regard to.
Moved by Bo, seconded by Thornd. Thomas? We'll do an alphabet, E, T, A, G, O. And Thomas. And before arm. Okay. Any further comments, questions, or discussions? Changing from Salsa Street to Isla Murdetts, if, uh, there are, well, of course.
You must share a crew.
Okay. Once you're in P and Z, they got through the Highmark and Canadian. Can you get the hospital? Make sure the comments, like, have a discussion about how they. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas. Hi. Mr. Thornd.
Aye.
Ms. Bo. Don't move any votes? Okay. That's it for the engineer's report. Uh, Dr. Finance, Mr. Vane.
People have accounts payable in the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thornd, seconded by Bo to approve the accounts payable for August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. Any additions, deletions, comments, or questions? There be none? Roll call, please. Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Thornd.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
No affirmative votes, no negative votes? The motion so carries. Thank you all.
That's it.
That's it. All right. Thank you, Eugene. Uh, comments from the public? Public is quiet this evening. Okay. Trustee reports, Rhodes and Parks. Mr. Harney is out of town this evening, and, uh, there was nothing reported to him to report to us that, uh, Mr. Steele had not already told us in Hinton Park. Ed gets a, a free ride. Brings us to finance, Mr. Thornd.
No report, Mr. President.
All right. Well, I'm going to give you a, uh, request as, uh, Chair of the Finance Committee. As most of you know, this past legislative session, uh, the legislatures have passed a, uh, amendment or revision to the non-home rural communities that will allow us to increase our sales tax without having to go to referendums. In the past.
Wow.
Only home rules were not that option. And we, lesser entities, the non-home rule, had to put it on a ballot at a general election and have it voted upon before we could even raise the sales tax a half a percent or a quarter of a percent. That has now been changed. However, this is what I want the Finance Committee to look into it, see how much, because we have to go through a whole bunch of hoops on this. We've got to, uh, have an ordinance developed and passed, and it has to be to the state within a deadline, and then you have to vote on it, pass it within a deadline, and then I think it's January first, two thousand and twenty-six, we can start collecting it. So, I mean, it's going to take us about eighteen months to go through the hurdles just to get to this point. But right now, it looks like, you know, if we can get a quarter of a percent, then we should probably look at incorporating that into our budget going forward in the future. I know what.
Is that the most that you can increase with that?
Each year is a quarter of a percent.
Quarter of a percent, okay.
So, I mean, that's what I said. I'd like to let, go look at this and make a long-term plan. So, yeah, one year we do it a quarter of a percent, we do it a quarter of a percent another year, we do it a quarter of a percent another year, until we get to our maximum one percent. So. If you, you look at our, uh, revenue and expenses, which just came out last week, Eugene forwarded, uh, yeah, a little bit of help in the sales tax would not hurt us.
Yeah.
And with the prospects of one thousand and one West Main down the line, it would be, you know, a nice addition to our uh, bottom line. Would definitely help us, you know, spread the, the paint a little further. If the Finance Committee will take a look at that in our next meeting. Appreciate it.
Will do.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mark. Uh, water and sewer, Ms. Bo.
Um, nothing really new to report. I have a plan to reach out to Billy and the other remaining three residents after Labor Day and see if I can't get all four of them together, and we can discuss how to proceed getting them their, um, wastewater meters. Um, and then I've, I've been fielding a few resident question queries for swales, and I know my trustee Harney, uh, spoke to me at the last meeting that he'd gotten a few questions about swales, and I think trustee Thornd has mentioned it. I, I'd like to know which of us should. Who should be handling swales?
Well, swale has always been a swell of a problem.
Yes.
Uh, because you get the run when you, uh, from the rocks, and then it becomes a road.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then you've got stormwater, which is a drainage issue, which goes into wastewater. So it becomes a water and sewer issue. Or is it just flooding?
So, yes.
Yeah.
It's a rock, I consider.
Rock, right.
Yeah. And so we just kind of punt.
I'll talk with Ed and Mark and we'll.
Hmm?
We'll, we'll discuss.
Yeah. Uh, well, when they come out, the first thing they do is check with Kyle and Jeff.
Yeah. This was a.
Postponing, we're aware of.
This was a repeat from last year from up in Deer Creek where they're getting that runoff specifically across from that recession pond that's, uh, retention pond, that recession pond. Uh, that's pretty much full all the time, and the way I'm seeing it is we're not, that area's going, that area, if anything, is going to be, continue to be developed. So we're still going to see if it's components of runoff, and I'd like to see if we can't start coordinating an effort to, instead of continuously trying to mow down into these wet areas, like, I've seen some people start to create your native rain gardens along there that would go a long ways to helping incorporate the water down into the groundwater as opposed to have, creating more runoff. And, yeah, I just wanted to see if we can't start coordinating efforts and see, especially I think up on the, the higher edge where it's coming down into the village, and see if we can't start filtering it through the groundwater there before it gets down into Delkey Creek and then the Fox, and just being mindful of the watershed.
Anything you know?
Yes.
Because, yeah, people don't realize, but, yeah, the watershed for the Fox down here starts at Tackow.
Yeah.
So any rain in Tackow is looking for the Fox River, it's coming through here. So, yeah, it's, uh, it's a big subject, it's a big topic, uh, and one thing I've been pushing on for years, we need to maintain the drainage we've got down here.
Mm-hmm.
The old area of town, Long Willow and Sycamore.
Yeah.
There are a couple of spots through here that, you know, we've got issues with. We can't take anymore from the top. So we allow it to move through down here, so. If you want to take over this swale.
Water is a big word. But yes, I will talk with them, talk with Jeff, and continue to learn about the area.
What's the coordinating thing? As I said, we, we've just kind of bounced it. Is it a rug drainage problem? Is it a, you know, stormwater?
And then my neighbor has that weird hole with the water just running through underneath it, so I'm learning a lot more about it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if you noticed that, uh, they did some swaling in front of, uh, Lake Sabatinon last week.
Yes, I was noticing that.
Yeah, well, they took one shovel full out and they found a hole, and all the water goes into that hole. It doesn't go to the creek.
Okay.
We don't know where it goes into that hole. It's supposed to all disappear.
So I open it back, man.
Yeah, I understand. That hole would never disappear until we. There'd be a tunnel hole. I don't know. Keep us posted.
I will, yes.
Yes. The green, uh, study had a lot of the, uh, rain garden ideas in it too.
Yeah, and there's a lot of ways that I feel like we could just start, start propagating and having some of the native plants here so that it would be something that we could, I'd like to see if we couldn't actually have some system or incentivization to plant these native plants. I mean, if you start cultivating them and then propagating them, people wouldn't have to pay for it as much, and it would, like we said, it would help, it would help filter the water ahead of time, it would help reduce the runoff and.
Reduce the cocktails, cattails.
The cattails, yeah. Yeah, and there's, there's a great assortment that you could really use in a rain garden, and they're beautiful, and especially if they're, you have these swales out by the street, it would kind of give a notion of kind of lining the streets and, so I'll talk to people and also look at some of our resources.
Yeah.
So, hang on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Police Public Safety, Mr. Dattley.
Thank you. Um, yeah, in your packet, you have a, um, kind of an update on the LPR reader program, which is a license plate reader uh, program. Um, need to kind of talk about that and get some direction, um, if we are interested in pursuing that further, and at what level, uh, we would like to pursue. So I would make a motion for discussion purposes that we proceed with the license plate reader program, uh, with approval of option number two.
Do we have a second?
My second.
Moved by Dattley, seconded by Thomas to discuss the, uh, license plate reader options. It's the emphasis on option number two.
Thank you. Um, I'm very much for this program. I was the first time it was put out there. I am still very much for this program. Um, I know there are concerns about data and all that information of what's done with it. Um, I think the benefits far outweigh, um, other portions that people are looking at. Um, as the chief has broken down in your packet, there's, right now, there's three options. Uh, we can certainly go back to them and see if there's other options as well.
Um, there definitely is. It's, maybe we're just ideas that I threw together and to show some different levels. Anything within the spectrum is available.
Yes.
Just so everybody knows.
Now, do we need to, uh, um, look at more than one source for this?
We need to? We don't need to. Flock is probably, not, not probably, Flock is by far the leading candidate or leading provider of, of these types of technologies. There are other technologies out there. Um, but Flock is the one that's the most interconnected and works with the most villages in our area by far.
I think one of the things he's asked by ordinances, we're required three quotes on expenditures over four thousand dollars unless the board waives that. So. That, does that answer your question?
Yeah. And I know funding is always an issue, and I'm not looking to say we need to go to the top tier and be, and run a deficit. Um, but I think there is maybe a happy medium we can come up to. Um, and that's where my conversations with the chief, we're looking at possibly guidance from, uh, the rest of the people on the board to see what, uh, your thoughts are.
My, my only real concern is that I understand that Flock, um, does not make their equipment available for independent inspection. Um, there's a few others that don't as well, but that's kind of a red flag to me.
Okay. I can get an answer as to why they, they feel that way as a co, as a company.
Okay.
It's not a problem. Um, I know another question that was brought up was data retention that we discussed before.
Yeah.
Um, Flock, the way their system works is they're on a thirty-day rolling, uh, retention. So beyond thirty days, it automatically, when a, when a, uh, a data point hits thirty days, it's hard deleted, it's gone. Um, and they do that all along, all along. The only time that that can change is if this board was to say, um, administratively, we want to keep our data for forty-five days. Uh, but it actually takes administrative action on a village board or some government entity to have that happen. Otherwise, Flock, every thirty days, something hits thirty days old, it goes away.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, any other comments quite ongoing through? Nine would cover every intersection, including its wall and sharing?
Nine, basically, you would have to.
Sharon and, um.
Rainbow.
Right.
Yeah. Nine, we would have to buy a camera somewhere to get into town. Yeah, and that's why when I originally put it together, I said that was the finest guy, that's the ideal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, lesson that, yeah, we can make it work, for sure. Um, and, and again, something is always better than, than nothing. Um, we would just have to pick, very strategically pick where we were to put that lower number of cameras, just, you know, to get the most bang for the buck for the residents, obviously. So that's, ultimately, that's what the program's about. It's, it's about keeping the residents safe and giving us a heads up to people, you know, coming into town who shouldn't be coming into town, um, driving cars that they shouldn't be driving into our town, that type of thing.
Any other comments or concerns, any more direction from the chief?
I have. No, I'll, I'll go ahead and move that we hardly require one quote.
Other quote?
No, just one quote.
Just one quote?
Yeah.
Okay. We can do that on the vote. We, we'll end up on the vote.
Okay.
So.
We don't need to do that now, then? Okay.
Unless, do you want to go with number two? Got it on the floor? You want to call a vote on number two?
That's entirely up to this board, like I said. I, I was, my purpose of suggesting it on, on the agenda tonight is to kind of get some direction as to where you wanted me to go. I don't want to waste the board's time, I don't want to waste Flock's time. Um, the other side, I don't want to spend money that we don't have, so, uh, that's why I kind of wanted to get it out there for discussion. I definitely will get us answers to trustee Thornd's question.
Yeah, okay.
As to why there's, uh, the independent reviews not there. Um, and get that information off to the board as well.
Okay.
Continue. We can postpone. We postpone this vote till.
Absolutely. That's, yeah, no, I, I guess this is not a program, I think we should rush.
postpone till, uh, September second. No, postpone till September second or September.
Third. Second and so.
With the third.
So that first meeting in September, I may not be here.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, as my wife. And she'll say, oh, I don't remember him.
First meeting in, the second meeting is September, the first meeting is October.
Yeah.
And then the second meeting is September sixteen.
Yeah.
And I had a question, uh, with there being other companies, is that kind of like doing a Apple to Android, are they incompatible, so like if other villages all have Flock, like we wouldn't be able to?
There there are limits in terms of, and it's proprietary information, so Flock is not going to want to share their information with, I forgot, with some of the community scope or one of the other camera companies that are out there, but I will look into some of the other companies as well, just to do our due diligence. I just, I know Flock, because that's who I dealt with in the place I came from, and the vast majority of villages in our area, that.
Okay. Uh, so we're putting this to the sixteen. A motion by Thomas or by Deatley and Thomas to postpone this decision on a motion till September sixteenth. All those in favor, say five, I say nine.
Fire.
Okay, motion so carries. Mr. Deatley's motion will be carried over on September sixteenth.
Thank you all.
And it's, all right, thank you. Okay, the next item is public building and environment, inquire. Not here this evening, and you know the message. A report left, okay, building and zoning, Ms. Thomas.
The only thing I have, I'd like to make everybody aware that I'm going to be, is part of the aquatics committee that I'm on as a resident. There is a finance meeting on Wednesday at seven o'clock at the Rad House Center because the aquatics committee has asked for cost estimates to redo Sleepy Hollow Pool and to do the out in Randall Oaks. And to make a decision on everything we needed cost because we had no there was no information, nothing what they wanted to build at either location, so we asked for that. Um, and that aquatics committee, so everybody knows, is residents from parts of Algonquin, Lake in the Hills, East Dundee, West Dundee, Carpenter's Field, and Sleepy Hollow. So we've got three residents from our, from Sleepy Hollow. So that is Wednesday, if anyone wants to come and listen to what's going on, it's seven P M. At the Rad House Center.
This coming, this coming.
This coming Wednesday. And then the other thing, and I and I would hope that people would go because that way they can see exactly what the costs are involved with both locations and what, you know, people are asking for from the survey that was done that people took part in, and then the other thing is, was brought to my attention about safety over here at Sleepy Hollow Pool, so myself and two of the other aquatic committee members did a walk around with the park district to check on safety, and we made some recommendations because some of the fences could, if you pushed on them, you could go somebody could, a little kid, a tiny adult or whatever, could go in. And so they are going to fix the areas that we suggested be fixed so that it will keep people out, and then they were going to, Dave was going to talk to the chief about patrolling and, you know, it is being patrolled, but there was some concern from some of the residents, so that has been looked at.
Is there is there new information out, I mean, I I thought this had been gone over, I know we didn't get the exact numbers, but that it was pretty well understood that there was no rebuilding this thing.
Oh, that's not the case.
Well, they should.
I thought it too, I did, I did, Mark, to be honest, I thought it too.
Yeah.
But from the survey that was done, they came up and I was shocked when they came up with Sleepy Hollow was included as part of it. So, but it's, I mean, I was happy about it, but there's no numbers. Billy, you were at that one meeting where we we asked, you know, what is the cost? They had no, they kept throwing out these numbers.
Yeah.
And I gave them a long list of questions that I had, and they came back with some answers, and then during the second meeting that we had, we asked what what is the cost to build? Is it eight million that they kept throwing out, or is it twenty million? Like, nobody could give us a cost while the builders, the the group that they are working with are putting everything together. So this is this meeting on Wednesday is strictly to, so everyone sees the finances because it's going to cost money to get those drawings and so they want to see. But we can't make a decision on which direction to go to present it to the park district until we have drawings and costs, we can't do that. So I'm not saying Sleepy Hollow will be rebuilt, but there's, there are options, we're looking into funding, you know, funding from, you know, everything, it's all being looked at.
Okay, I mean, and I don't have a problem with that, honestly, don't, I mean, there's just, I mean, but everything we've heard up to this point is, you know, we'll all die if we do that, right, sort of the things. Okay.
Round.
And there and there's, they've given us some other options too, or we've asked about other options. Grant writing and going out to other entities to see donation, like that have done stuff like this. So that it's it's promising, it's not promising, but it kind of is to get that information that we've asked for and coming up with, and the park district, park district is open, they have to step back and let this aquatics committee, they have to step back and let us ask the questions and get the answers before a decision can be made.
Okay.
Okay.
Cool.
Good.
Yeah. Thanks for the word.
Keep our ears crossed, but.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Kelly. Okay, moves us to old business, and the old business is coming for the board. Old business, we'll move to new business. First thing on the new business is the amendment of the ordinances to include a three meter water meter rate, a three inch water meter rate. If you look at our ordinances, we have, what was it, three quarters inch, inch and a half, two inch is our largest. Uh, the people at one thousand and one West Main have requested a three inch service line into their building. Means we have to go out and purchase a three inch meter. So the meter will be ours, there will be a meter charge to one thousand and one West Main for the meter, the same as there is with the rest of our residents. We just need this evening to address that price, I believe the one inch meters are seven dollars. So a three inch meter by deduction should be twenty one dollars.
Well, yeah, what we figured is what the replacement cost would be after the twenty years, so at twenty one dollars a month, it would pay for the meter in twenty years.
Okay. So the recommendation is that we have a three inch meter rate of twenty one dollars a month. We have a motion so approved.
I hope.
Second, Deatley.
Bo, moved by Bo, seconded by Deatley to amend our water rate ordinance to include a three inch meter with a twenty one dollar a month meter fee for the replacement of that meter in twenty years. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There be none, roll call please. Mr. Thorndyke.
Hi.
Mr. Dudley.
Hi.
Ms. Bo.
Hi.
Ms. Thomas.
Hi.
Four hundred bucks, no negative bucks, a motion so carries, thank you all. Okay, the next one, somewhat relations to the swale, but not quite. It is the wastewater service agreement between the Village of West Dundee and the Fox River Water Reclamation District, all it's known as Forward. Uh, if you all recall, some three years ago, we began the process of redoing the agreement between West Dundee and Forward. Part of that agreement requires the Village of Sleepy Hollow to pay their percentage of any upgrades that are required at the Forward plant. So West Dundee, we are getting a portion of West Dundee's capacity, so West Dundee gets the bill, they break it out, and then they bill us for our portion of it. So we've gone through that, Mr. Van has looked at the numbers, he's in agreement with them, they pushes up a little in the beginning, but they pay it off a little quicker in the end, so it all washes out with him, and he's fine with it, so we have a motion to approve Resolution five sixty. We will get the new payment schedule established and in the books, and West Dundee will be happy and Forward will be happy.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thorndyke, seconded by Thomas. Okay, to approve Resolution number five sixty, a resolution approving the amendment of the two the twenty twenty three wastewater service agreement with the Village of West Dundee. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Our last payment on this will be in April of twenty twenty two.
Something like that.
Unless something breaks as the plant, we got to fix it again.
Yep.
All right, no other comments, questions, or discussion, roll call please. Mr. Thorndyke.
Hi.
Ms. Thomas.
Hi.
Ms. Bo.
Hi.
Mr. Dudley.
Hi.
Four hundred bucks, no negative bucks, a motion so carries, thank you all. And that brings us to item fifteen.
Move re-charge.
Second.
Moved in second, before I call for the vote, I just want to remind everybody that next month of September, Monday, the first Monday of the month is Labor Day. So we will meet the Tuesday of the month, first Tuesday, September the third. Okay, on the motion to adjourn, embarrassing five, I say nine.
Hi.
Was closed. So carries, we're adjourned.